Yeah, hold on, we're just waiting for Travis to log on. And Jonah. Who's got the feedback, is that? Yours? Just shut your microphone, no, shut your microphone off on your computer.
There it is, I got it. You want me to do it here?
Yeah, you gotta hover.
I think we're good.
So you gotta hover it, so in Google Docs, it doesn't automatically do it blue. You hover it, and then it'll show up as blue, and then you click on it.
Are we gonna just like? Dismiss at the end and then peacock these? Versus stopping midstream? Cast them out and then get going? You start? I'll do that. Or have them come up. It's the first time I've seen Jonah, by the way.
Alright, so let's see. Make sure that everybody, Jason's on, Jeremy's on, Jonah's on. Maggie's on, Travis's, Travis casted because I don't know what he did to his name. I don't know what he did. I don't see. Alright, Jane, okay, alright, we're good. Um, if everybody could just make sure that you shut on your keyboard, there's a speaker with a slash in it. You can shut that on.
Up on the top.
Yep, on the top of your keyboard.
The top of your keyboard, up above the number line. There's a little horn that has a slash through it, and you just, the one next to it, if you hit it, it'll bring your volume down, and then you won't get that feedback.
Everybody get it? No, Jane, is it yours? Matt, is it yours? No, not your mic muted, your computer muted. Was it Maggie's? Nope. Jam, it's you. You'd think we'd have this done by now. Making a typo for technical.
Okay.
For future, you might wanna switch over to Zoom. Okay, so we are reconvening way later than we thought we were going to. So it is 7:13. Um, we have already stood to our pledge of allegiance. Um, when I called the first meeting, or when I called the meeting to order prior, so. Um, at this time then, do we have any agenda changes? No? Um, presentation?
We, we do have a presentation. And I was going to put that down in the administrative reports.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Well, I wanted to talk first before the presentation. Uh, so any questions on the campus construction report?
Um, I just had a question. Um. Are we, so it, on the report, it just showed Jarvis, so is every other building then complete? On like the high school? Okay. Cause yeah, usually, I mean, typically, I thought that they've always at least just given us the punch list too, in the reports. Of what was left that they needed to do for the punch list. What else I saw in there was just all of like the 10 pages for Jarvis.
Kelly? Kelly?
Uh, hold on, you're. Yeah.
Kelly.
Sorry.
Remind Jeff to turn his microphone on, we can't hear his comments.
Been managed probably sometime between October and November. The only things that have been popping up are, hey, they forgot to paint that piece of trim, or they didn't put the threshold in that doorway. So it's like, they, it might have been something that was overlooked in the punch list, but Gordy has picked up on it and said, that should have been addressed, and it's being taken care of. And then anything else that's left is warranty issue. At Berenger Fisher, and then there would be Jarvis's punch list hasn't even been created yet.
So, and looking to at the report, you know, at the top, it says, you know, in lieu of COVID, so. The projection is that for it to be 91% done and completed for Jarvis. So then it was hopefully like that 9% is just those punch list items.
Well, there's still the, they gotta do all the terrazzo in the cafeteria, and that's the main thing that's really left. And then they have to stay off of it for up to three and a half to four weeks, so. They're waiting until they have a window. So that would probably be the five out of the 9%, the rest is gonna be miniscule types of things. The, the poor in the cafeteria is the last big item. The good, they got the class early for the library media center. Um, they've gotten some of the things for the staging done and things like that, and the, so I think they're ahead of the curve. With some of those items where they thought they'd be getting beat up in August trying to finish up those items. They're ahead there, but the big, the big concern now is to get everybody out of the way, so they can pour the cafeteria and keep them off it.
And that was part of the plan from the beginning, is the whole new section would be, uh, what they were gonna use summertime. So like putting the seating in into the auditorium. We were in there the other day, and they were putting the last piece in with everything, and they just had to paint the stage. And now it's just getting the seating in, which is the next step in there, and the terrazzo floor and cafeteria. But the rest of the building, moving all of those stuff in.
The treads on the stairs, because they're concerned that they get damaged with the moving in, so there's, there's some trim items left that they're trying to wait until the very last minute, so that they don't get damaged and then have to end up replacing them, because we don't own it yet. And all we're gonna do is find a walk through, and if there's a dent or something that even we created by moving office furniture and stuff in, they're gonna be like, yep, fix it, because we haven't taken, you know, we haven't taken back, you know, we haven't approved it all yet, so.
Any other questions? Alright, I asked.
Sorry, are they moving the teachers' rooms in now? Are they?
Yeah, so the process is starting right now. Uh. I was gonna update everyone on graduation at Saturday. Kudos to all of the particular, killer guidance. Mr. Bonner Buns who played on the stand, 140 times, right, right, it's the box. Uh, Bob Critzer, Kyle, who are also there. And also Jonathan Alexander, Sally Creamis, and Mr. Coggin, who were down below, and then also a affiliate PD officer that came up and helped. So there was a lot of people surrounding graduation that made it very special. Uh, we received, uh, very positive feedback, gave feedback back to Mr. Keeler. And as a parent on the other side of it, uh, experiencing the whole procedure, it was very well organized. It flowed very seamlessly, and the big piece of, uh, for a parent in the culmination of your, your son or daughter walking across the stage, and what was nice for us was that it was not rushed. We were able to be close to the stage. We were able to take all the pictures we wanted, and then we were able to come off of the stage and have a professional picture taken by Bob Critzer. And the whole thing was, uh, very non-stressful. And that was serendipitous to, I didn't realize how non-stressful that piece was going to be versus for parents in normal ceremony to be kinda jockeying to try to get the best picture that they can, and, hold on, wait, wait, my camera's not working. None of that had to, to happen for parents, so although it wasn't the real ceremony, I think that, uh, it still went very well. And I don't know if any of you have heard any positives or negatives out there, but, um, hopefully it was better experience than, than parents expected under the circumstances, was really the goal. And then it was a eight to nine hour day for all of those individuals, and it was like 95, 96 degrees. And so that was a long, long day, and I really appreciate the effort that they all put in, uh, for that day, so. Uh, thank you to, to all of them, and thank you to Mr. Keeler who spearheaded that effort. 140, is that correct, Mr. Keeler?
We had 140 students graduate. Um, of the 140, I believe we had ten that decided, can you hear me? I have it unmuted, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Alright, so we had 141 eligible graduates that didn't make it.
Yes, and you're.
We had. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Alright, so we ended up having 140 out of 141 eligible kids graduate. Uh, one did not make it unfortunately. Uh, of the 140, I would say approximately 130, 131 participated in the ceremony. Some just elected not to, um, but I wanna say it was around 130 when I gave Kyle the, the no-shows that didn't come.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, lastly. Uh, as end of the year, I just was really proud of our district, I was proud of all the stakeholders that were involved, all the stakeholders, including parents, kids, teachers. Um, all of our, our maintenance staff, our cafeteria staff, all the stakeholders, our bus drivers. They did a tremendous job, especially in the last three months, and I've said it enough, but I can't say it enough, where, um, they were great. There was, and, and it was just nice, and I'm proud to, to be a part of this district where everyone came together and worked really hard to, to do the best we could. And, um, it was, it was a really good showing, and, and obviously it wasn't perfect, but we did the best we could, and. He's a special person, for sure, and he sat there the whole time in that heat, in that costume, and God bless him, so. Definitely a shout out to Duser for being a Buzz Lightyear all day.
You might, you might wanna start considering giving Duser his own special parking spot.
I know.
This is only the class.
And finally, this is last meeting, and I just wanted to say, uh, I really appreciated your leadership through the course of the last few years with being the president on the board, it's not easy. Uh, I felt like you always kept the board on track and, and us on track with what we needed to do. And the priorities of the Board of Education, you always reminded us and reminded like what our job is, and that's not easy to do. We can easily get into the weeds, and you, you never allowed that. Um, you're always very professional in terms of, not only understanding education, but also being able to separate yourself from the role that we play every day, and then also the role of a, of a president, which is not easy, and as a role of a board member. And, you know, the time that it takes to be on the board, and the dedication that it takes to be on the board, um, it's, it's a not everyone's coming around to you every time for being on the board. Uh, so it's not an easy job, it takes a lot of time, and I just feel that you helped us to make this a very smooth process, and I really appreciate that, and from the bottom of my heart, I, I wish you the best. And I understand that, um, you know, it's time to move on, but your time spent here was very critical, and I owe that to you, and thank you so much. And so on behalf of the board, uh, we, we will give flowers, and Maggie bakes for you, and baked for each. And what I would say at this point is, uh, if anyone wants a cookie, come up, we won't have.
We can dole them out.
I know, he, look at him, he's, he's itching to go.
So, you know, the decision, you know, I joked at it, you know, it was a, an easy decision for me to make, but it clearly, you know, it wasn't, it was um, in my new role as an administrator for BOSI's, um, I just feel like, for me professionally, the best move for me to focus on is, is my career and, um, you know, my, my personal life with my children and my family too, so, you know, I just wanted to thank the community for allowing me to serve them in that capacity, and then for all of you, um, you know, moving forward, I feel like we're in good hands, um, as I go around to Sandy. So, um, just, just thank you, you know, your administrators that are on here as well, I see Mr. Keeler and Kathy, obviously. You know, we'll continue our communication, but in a different capacity, so be nice to me.
Likewise.
Back to you telling me what to do, so. Um, I appreciate it, um, Marcia. I mean, honestly, without you, the district, I, I said it at our last meeting, um, hopefully you'll continue to stay on until Jerry fires, because, um. Um, no, but, you know, without you, I think it would, my job would be, as the board president, very difficult, you were very accommodating and yes, answered a lot of questions, so, it wasn't you and your org. I might not have as effective, so thank you. Alright.
Thank you, and any other? Cause at this point, I do have Kathy, who's gonna come on virtual here and give a, uh, administrative report on some important pieces that we need to talk about. So I'll turn up my volume.
Please come get some. Oh.
Okay, Kathy, you are, you are on. Are you talking yet?
Unmuted, Kathy. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Does anyone wanna get a cookie before I start? I was given like 30 minutes, so you might wanna get a cookie.
She was given 10.
You do, you know, watch it now. Kelly, I know that you don't mind if I go over 10 minutes, cause this is your last meeting, so. Okay. Okay. 10, okay, so Mr. Rich asked me to, um, present to the board on something, um, that I am responsible for writing for the district. Um, we were identified as a TSI school, so we were identified as a targeted support and improvement school. Um, we were identified based on two subgroups in two of our buildings. Um, at Jarvis Middle School, we were identified for the subgroup of black students, and for CVA, we were identified for the subgroup of students with disabilities. Identified based on, um, their overall academic achievement. Um, there's a lot that goes into how you are identified, there's a lot of intricacies, I guess, um, in the percentages, and, um, what puts you into that category. But all of this identification was based on the 2018-19 school year. So with that designation, um, I am looking at it as, and I am kind of presenting it as, we've been given a gift. Um, we are a targeted school, we are not a comprehensive school, if we were a CSI school, which there are some schools who have unidentified as CSI schools. You lose a lot of the autonomy on what you can do, people from the state come in and they kind of run the show with you as their point person at the school. So with this status of being a targeted, um, we are allotted funds. Um, we are allotted funds at a district level, we are allotted funds at a target level for Jarvis, and we are allotted funds at a target level for CVA. So with this designation comes an allocation of funds where you are, um, supposed to use these funds based on what you write into a plan. Um, I'm responsible for writing the plan. There are a lot of pieces that go into, um, what needs to go into the plan. In February, Mr. Keeler and I went down to Albany for two invigorating days to kind of learn the ins and outs of what needs to go into the plan. Um, I would say that we, we walked away sharing the same frustrations as many schools across the state. Um, there are a lot of parameters put into this plan. So what does it mean for Central Valley? What it means for Central Valley is, over the course of the past month, um, we have been, we have created a district stakeholder committee, and on the district stakeholder committee, you have to have parents, you have to have, um, students representing, hopefully that, those subgroups, especially at the high school, you have to have students, you have to have teachers, um, and you have to have administrators. So there's requirements that you really kind of have equal participation of those stakeholders. So we've met three times virtually, and Amy Coates, who works for, um, the Regional Information Center, has kind of helped facilitate this process for us. This plan, the district plan, or the DESEP, you'll hear them call it the DESEP, is due July 31st. And that plan is due to the state. In addition to that plan, so there's three plans that have to be written, the DESEP, which is going to be submitted and certified by Mr. Rich and sent to the state by July 30th, or 31st. There's a SCAP plan, a school comprehensive education plan for Jarvis, and a SCAP plan for CVA. So by December, um, I'll say, or by November, um, we will have all three plans. Because of COVID, everything changed, and, and deadlines have been moved. There's different things that you have to do for the SCAP plan, but I'll save that for another meeting. Um, so really, the stakeholder group, our job was to kind of come up with, what are the priorities that we see in the district? And I guess the thing that, um, we started with was just kind of brainstorming, just people sharing, um, their thoughts from their perspective or vantage point. Um, you have to have five priorities, uh, we came up with the five priorities. Um, I'll just kind of summarize what they have to deal with. One of the priorities has to deal with, um, school culture, um, how it relates to students, um, who face poverty. Um, and that is district-wide. Um, so the hope is that we will have increased student attendance, and ultimately increased student engagement, and increased relationships with, with teachers. Um, the second priority that we wrote was using data to kind of align and prioritize our writing curriculum and resources and standards, um, across the grade levels. Um, the third priority that we decided on was kind of engaging the reluctant learner. And a lot of what we heard, which I think was very interesting, especially from the students, so there were students, um, and they, they really did a nice job participating, was they really want hands-on experiences, and they want like real-world opportunities. So we wrote that as one of our priorities. Um, another priority, and this kind of deals directly with the subgroup identified at the high school, um, but you know, this is something that we really need to look at district-wide, is kind of re-imaging the collaboration, the process between our SED teachers and our gen ed teachers, um, you know, how to differentiate instruction better, um, what instructional strategies will work for at-risk learners. And the last priority that we had was expanding teacher professional development, um, opportunities, and that really is, encompasses the whole district, things literacy, classroom management, motivational speakers, um, so we are working on developing those priorities. Um, I'm going to be meeting next week with the administrators and Amy to kind of fill in this plan, um, that we will submit to the state. Um, and really, I guess, you know, my job is to make sure that teachers are aligned in their curriculum, following the state's standards. And that I am providing them with resources and professional development to help continue to move our ship in the right direction. Um, a lot of the summer PD that we are doing during the month of July, especially in pre-K through eighth grade, really deals with priority two, three, and four. Um, any priority that you write has to be vetted in, um, qualitative and quantitative measures, so we have to vet it in data, we have to look at data. Um, there's a lot of steps that you have to follow, the good news with not having the state kind of controlling that is, um, we kind of can make decisions on what's gonna work for, for Central Valley. Um, one of the things that we're really excited about is, you know, when I said we're allotted this, this gift, um, with this designation of being a targeted school is, um, we have the opportunity to use those funds to have an opening day speaker. Um, so we have tentatively booked, um, Brian Mendler, and he will come in, hopefully, in person. Um, but if he can't be here in person, he can do it virtually, to kind of, um, his vantage point is, he is um, a presenter who was a student with disabilities. Um, he had ADHD, and he really talks very candidly, and it just gives real examples of what it's like to look through that lens, and how, how to engage those students. Um, very energetic, um, not only is he going to come for opening day, but he will have two days of follow-up in the district. I'm really trying to set up PD that is, um, something that the teachers can put into their classroom immediately. I, I know that I've attended a lot of PD, and I'm, I'm sure, um, if you've listened to someone present, you're either engaged or not engaged, you either take something away, or you don't take something away. And I'm really trying to set up PD that the teachers can take something away and immediately put it into their instructional practices and delivery in the classroom. So the reason why we can have this opening day speaker is because we will write this into the grant, into this DESEP grant, and we will be able to fund it through that stream, so I'm excited about that, and I think that that will be a very positive way to start the school year, especially in light of not ending the school year the way that we may have wanted. Um, any questions on that? Am I over 10 minutes? Am I over 10 minutes? No, okay. No questions? Okay. So I just wanted to give you, and it's really hard to stick to 10 minutes, but I just wanted to give you an update on the continuity. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, sorry.
Has a question.
I did not get that. Can someone chat what the question is, so I can read the question and answer it?
Can you hear me?
I cannot hear you. Still can't hear.
Hold on.
Sorry.
Oh my God, I need to...
Do they want to chat the question, and I'll answer it?
You're unmuted now. Can you hear Jeremy?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear Jeremy, yes.
Okay, so Jane's question was, is Richfield Springs also a school district that was, let's say, targeted or in a DESEP situation?
Yes. The two schools in the county that were in a similar scenario as Central Valley is West Canada Valley and Richfield Springs. And the person that they used, we are using one of the, kind of the PD presenters that they have used. And I guess the nice thing about having, one of the nice things about having Jeremy Kozak is, he understands because he's lived this at West Canada, so he's been really helpful.
Well, Kathy, my question was...
Oh, sorry.
Because Richfield, my daughter teaches English there, and I know that they just were removed from that. They were on it for four years, I believe. I'm not positive of all the facts here, but I know they were limited on what they could teach. So when you say it's a good thing, how can that be a good thing if you're restricted on what you can teach?
So the difference between, I think the difference between Richfield and Central Valley is, Richfield was, their status was a focused school, so the state came in.
Oh, okay.
The state was not coming in to Central Valley. It was much more, it was much more rigid. It was much more rigid.
Okay.
So my message to the staff is, right now, we are a targeted. We have to have two years, we have to show two years of growth in order to get off the list. Unfortunately, I think we would have had, we would have been moving in the right direction with the subgroup at Jarvis if we had had state tests this year. I never thought that I would say that I wanted to have state tests, but I think that we would have had it. So you need to have two consecutive years of showing growth with those subgroups in order to get off the list. And we certainly can't decline. We have to be showing progression. So, does that answer that?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, okay. Any other questions on that? Okay.
No, no. That's good, thank you.
It's good, okay. So the continuity of learning plan, so this was something that the district had to work on and submit, Mr. Rich had to submit this in the portal to the state. And I think that school districts, all school districts, did the best that they could, given the circumstances that we were in. Nobody could have, well, I don't want to say nobody could have predicted this, because people did kind of predict this, but the school's response to the pandemic, I think, was appropriate. I think that administrators, I have never seen, and I can honestly say, I have, everybody is working so hard, so hard. And I have to give a shout out to all the administrators, because it is countless hours, countless hours. So the continuity of learning plan that we submitted needs to be tweaked. It needs to be revisited, based on what we know. At the end of the school year, I had Google meets with every single, every single grade level, and vertical meetings. So I met with pre-K, K1, 1, 2, all the way up through. In those Google meets, they kept track of pre-COVID and post-COVID instruction. So what did you cover pre-COVID and since March 16th? What have you been able to cover and what didn't you get to? So what have you been able to cover and what didn't you get to now shapes what we need to plan? So kind of how I've been talking to them is, the virtual learning, nothing replaces in-person learning, nothing can replace it. So there's the normal summer slide and the regression. We are going to have to repace and reteach and revisit skills. So I wanted them to know, what is the grade level prior? What are the things that you are going to have to repace and reteach? So that information is all in a Google Doc and has been shared, but they were able to have dialogue with the teachers through Google, which is really the best thing that we could have done. In addition to that, over the summer, they'll work as grade levels on kind of repacing and doing that. The other thing that has to do with the continuity of learning plan is, we put a survey out to teachers and to parents. We sent it out, does any, I'm sorry, we sent that out to teachers and to parents. 100 teachers, at this point, 100 teachers have responded, and 65 parents have responded. Parents, June 30th was the date. We will, you know, I will talk with Mr. Rich about whether or not we want to put it out again to parents, whether we want to have Kyle do an all-call, what we want that to look at. So actually, today, I started to look at some of the comments that were made, and they really vary. There's a lot of frustration. There's a lot of frustration because parents didn't sign up to be their child's teacher. You know, we entrust our children to the school and the teachers to be that, the professional providing them with that educational foundation. So I think as things, as things are turned in, I can talk more about that or share that, and that can be shared out with you. But just so you kind of know, a survey has went out. Based on that, we will kind of reshape our continuity of learning plan. The other thing that I wanted to point out, and I just think that these would be things that I would be wondering about, so I'm just providing you with this information. What PD happened during COVID? So teachers had access to virtual PD. During COVID, March 16th to the end of the school year, we had 88 teachers, pre-K through 12, participate in some form of virtual PD. That ranged from Google Hangout and Google Meet Overview, remote teaching for early learning, technology training, feedback in, student feedback in G Suite. So there was a lot of opportunities for that. I think it can become overwhelming for the teachers, so that's one of the things that the teachers have said, is just more training in PD and how are we using this tool? But I was, I was impressed that 88 teachers took advantage of PD, you know, and they really wanted to learn how to use it. The other thing that we did was, we set up a social-emotional learning comfort corner. So I met with social workers, school psychologists, guidance counselors, school nurses, and we talked about what are the kids' needs, what are their social-emotional needs, like what are you hearing? Lot of anxiety, you know, there's a lot of emotional, social and emotional needs for our students. So what we did was, we set up, and it's posted on the website weekly, student resources, teacher resources, and parent resources. So parents can kind of go there and find resources that will help support their child's social-emotional well-being. So that was something that, I'm sorry, go ahead. Did somebody have a comment? No? Okay. The last thing, well, not the last thing, but I, one of the, one of the other things that, and I don't know if you already know this, but Mr. Rich had to fill out a digital equity survey, and that really kind of told us, you know, where are we at with, where are we at with access? And I think the bottom line is, we have students that do not have sufficient internet access. So it doesn't really matter what we give them for a device. They don't have sufficient internet access. We have some teachers that don't have that, but we were able to kind of provide them with some support in how to get that. Really, the rough estimate on that is about 192. So just so you kind of can gauge, like, how many of our kids don't have internet? And a lot of that has to do with where they live. There's not the ability for them to connect. Is there any questions on that? The continuity of learning plan? Anything on that?
No.
No? Okay, all right. Just really, really quick, two minutes or less. What are we doing for kind of curriculum and an update move going into the summer? This is our second year of invisions, math series, K through eight. Unfortunately, the year was cut short, which, you know, didn't give our teachers the opportunity to teach it to fidelity for one year. There's going to be training over the summer, two days' training for K through eight teachers. We're going to break that up so that they can get more training in how to use the technology piece. We need them to be able to use the technology piece. Kindergarten, we are putting in a program. Wilson Foundation, so all kindergarten teachers will be teaching Wilson Foundation, that's a two-day training that will happen this summer, systematic explicit phonics instruction. Hi, Tessa. And the last thing, as far as summer curriculum proposals, is teachers are able to submit for their proposals to be reviewed, and building administrators and myself will review those and approve those accordingly. All right, that's all I have, because I'm getting text messages that I need to stop, so. Does anybody have any?
Any questions? Okay, go ahead. We have a question, hold on.
It's not Ken Long, is it?
Do you have a question, Jay?
I'm sorry to unmute.
Okay.
Kathy, just curious, looking into the fall, what are your biggest concerns regarding curriculum and instruction?
One of my, can I say what my biggest, my biggest concern if we do not return in the fall is, it doesn't matter what the curriculum and instruction is, if there is not a relationship, I think it's going to be very challenging for teachers to establish a relationship like this. So I think establishing that relationship will be a challenge. It's going to increase everybody's level of anxiety, parents, students, teachers. So that's a big concern, and how will we address that? As far as curriculum, regression of skills, how to address regression of skills? We know that we're going to have to do some benchmark assessments when students come in. We're going to have to really get a handle on where they're at. How are we repacing our curriculum? We know that we have to start the year, if students are physically in front of us and it is in-person learning, teachers have to start the year exposing, exposing, exposing to Google Classroom. They need to have that a regular piece of their instruction so that kids are really familiar with that, in the event that we do have to unfortunately shift to virtual learning again. I think instructionally, I think teachers, it was challenging to not have a lot of their materials. You know, one of the things that I think we need to look at, if we do have to go virtual, is providing more structure for Google meets, providing more structure for what that looks like, providing more parameters and expectations that are consistent. You know, that's, you know, that's the reality of some of the, some of the parents, it's just kind of like consistency, and kids want to see their teachers. They want to see their teachers. Like, you know, even if they don't want to see them, they want to see their teachers. So I think that we have to set up those structures. But as far as my biggest concerns with curriculum, it would be regression of skills and knowing that we have to repace, which is what we will be doing. You know, teachers know that, they've already started to do that, they've already started to do that. They know what the skills are that the students are not going to come in with. My biggest concerns are with that middle, that middle group, that like upper elementary to middle school, because there's a lot of content that is covered. There is a lot of content, especially in the area of math. There's a lot of content, difficult, challenging content. So we really have to up our game there. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Yeah, I have a comment. I don't think it's any secret to anybody that, you know, the struggle with the multiple platforms, so, you know, as we're navigating and, you know, being on, you know, the state task force and our regional reopening, I'm just curious what the feedback was from parents in, you know, now that they, I think they had to try to get their hands into their students' learning and navigating the Google Classroom, like you had mentioned, hitting the ground running, making sure that the kids know how to use Google Classroom, but I didn't hear you mention Buzz, which is not my favorite thing, which we all know.
Right, okay, the Buzz. So I think that one of the things, one of the things that has kind of risen to the top in all of the survey comments is technology and the use of technology and the frustration in navigating, not only different, you know, it's, some of it is platform, but just different modes of communication. Some teachers, all with positive intent, sent multiple emails to parents, trying to like keep on top of it. It was overload. It was total overload when you have, you know, six different teachers and everybody's sending 10 emails and you have three kids. It just, so we know we have to kind of dial that back. We've already had conversations as an admin team about one platform. I can tell you, based on survey results, there's confusion between Google Classroom and School Tool. They didn't even call it School Tool. So we know that there's a level of education that we have to provide parents. The challenge is how to provide that, because for the parents that need us to provide that, they don't have the technology. So how do we provide that? And that's a struggle, I think I saw Mr. Keeler nodding his head, that struggle is real. So we know we should go with one platform. We know we should go with one platform. We did not go with Zoom. I will say, we did not go with Zoom, because Zoom was not recommended by the RIC for us to go with Zoom. I think Zoom has upped their game and perfected things, but...
Absolute opposite at Bosse's. So we have, because Google meets is taking away, as of September 30th, the ability to record. So if teachers need to record their lessons, et cetera, and post it, we have decided to move forward with Zoom and the ability to have those breakout sessions, and the teacher organize that. So it's just funny, because I know that that's a conversation that's probably going to come up in tomorrow's meeting, because... Because I shared that with Jeremy Kozak actually yesterday. Because that seems to be the pro version is the one that's ed law 2D compliant. And that's the one that we were told is is the best platform. So it's interesting. All of these regionally get on the same page, I think would be. But that's a conversation here nor there that we'll have tomorrow.
I think what people need to know is vendors have they they put the carrot out there. Everybody's taking a little bite of the carrot. It's free, it's free, it's free till June 30th to try to hook you. And then from September, you're going to be paying. And I think Zoom has ironed out some of their kink and we would we would have to look at that. But I think just to answer your question, one platform, one platform. Right now, our teachers are most familiar with Google Classroom.
Thank you from a parent's perspective. Jason sent me a text while you were speaking too. Thank you for asking that question because he obviously had the same concern.
Yeah, we understand that it's been, you know, I it's been challenging. It's been I've been a terrible teacher to my to my daughter. I have failed. I did not get teacher of the year. I did not get appreciated during teacher appreciation week. He told me I was I should never teach. So I called her teacher and he had Google. I don't know. All right, are we changing? Are we changing? Can I just answer one thing? Can I just answer that? So Travis, um, all of the special areas. So one of the things that we have to do when we reevaluate our continuity of learning plan is have teachers kind of represented in those areas. I think all that type of special area instruction has to be altered. We it has to be altered. You know, I think what we did was was efficient and it was it got us, you know, kids were exposed to content and they got curriculum. But I think every school is evaluating and we're talking about ways that we can make it better. So we need to we need to make it better.
So I'll just add this as a board on board member in policy to really start to look at kind of equitable grading and our grading policies and making sure that our grading policies are reflected and updated. So whatever kind of decisions are made that maybe it's, you know, we can we can look. I know everybody across the state, across the country is is going to be making those changes. But, you know, we we want to make sure that our grading practices are equitable for, you know, our students with disabilities and, you know, making sure that we're able to grade them accordingly when we're only able to provide to the maximum extent possible their accommodations. So it might be something since it's my last meeting to for future board members to think about that. You know, your grading policy is something that's probably going to have to get looked at to make sure that it's reflective of how things are going to happen in COVID.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
That's all I have for the reports. And let's up the guy up there.
All right, am I muted? Nope, I'm not muted. So.
Is that me? Does somebody need to chime in?
Report, so you're unmuted.
Very happy with the the budget vote, even though it was chaotic process. The the outcome was very successful. Over 92% yes votes was exciting to see that people in our communities are still very supportive of our educational program, which was nice. Another positive note stating continued to flow. So we were able to continue to pay our bills and pay folks. So that was a bonus. We're only about three and a half million left this year. So, you know, we're pretty close, which is which is good. The rest of the time, we're going to finish up closing up the school year, wrapping up our book, trying to get them ready for the auditors to get in. Early July, I'll be working on the transparency report, the budget side of the transparency, which we've been involved with for three years now. So that'll take me probably 10 to 14 days of back and forth with the state trying to get them to understand that we're doing the best we can with the the resources we have to fund our educational program equitably. Other than that, you know, I'm just glad that, you know, we're all here and looking forward to all these return to school meetings that we're all part of now and hoping to forge a plan that's going to bring kids back to school, so.
And do all your regular work at the same time.
Yeah, it is what it is, but you know, it's one of those things. Hoping you can have a good summer. That's what I'm looking forward to. Kelly, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. All right, I'm moving on for discussion. No, yes. You know, I just wanted to, I know Mr. Keeler's on there and I don't know who he's texting because I can see him looking down. Call him out on it just like a kid in class. I just wanted to, you know, extend my appreciation for how above and beyond Mr. Keeler, as well as the rest of the staff in the district went to make graduation special, all of the extra events that happened and making sure that the kids didn't miss out on on things. You know, like their the awards ceremony. I mean, Kyle, you put helped put that together and that was phenomenal. It was seamless. It was it was great. So I know Kyle has spent a substantial amount of time putting putting together videos. And I know as much as Mr. Keeler doesn't like speaking in front of a crowd, I think he did pretty good speaking up at the podium and probably just speaking to Kyle as he was recording like there was 100 people sitting there. So he did a great job. You know, and overall, the community, I think, is very pleased, you know, just a thank you to to the village and putting up the the banners of this of our graduates. That was, you know, a a great thing to see in addition to kind of, you know, everybody's lawn signs that they put out. You know, the parade was very well attended. And I think that that was great to see and just, you know, as the kids went by, you know, having them. There was many of them that had tears in their eyes as they were going up to the high school and then as they were leaving. So, you know, knowing the impact that it had on them is just, you know, I'm appreciative of that. Especially I wasn't able to hand them their diploma this year. So and I know the gratification that I get in, you know, their handshakes. So you could see it on their faces. So congratulations, you guys did a did a fantastic job and hopefully we don't ever have to navigate that ever again. But in doing so, I think that we did a stellar job, so kudos to all of you. Anything else for board discussion? No, all right, then we will move on to public open forum. So this time we'd like to give the public an opportunity to comment about this agenda, about programs or operations within the school. Comments on personnel matters will not be addressed in public session. All comments will be noted and responded to by the Board of Education President or Superintendent at a later date. We ask that you keep your comments to 10 minutes or less. So if there is anyone out there that would like to. Well, I think there's some public comment. Kathy says the parade was the first time she looked at students' faces and saw happiness. It was perfect. Graduation was perfect. Travis said he agreed with me. Is there anything else for? On the parade? I I figured. Anything else? Nothing from Ken?
Oh, no, he's been saying, make sure you tell Kelly I'm going to be here to talk about this.
All right, so moving on then. Items removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration. Wait, who just said something?
Five seconds.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I was texting Kyle to mute me.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear my echo in the back there now. So July 2nd, we are planning to still move forward with a kids only graduation. Right now, the executive order says you can have outdoor ceremonies socially distances six feet apart. No crowd crowds no larger than 150. So based on that, July 2nd, we are planning on doing a kids only. We are going to do it at the high school. Mr. Olds actually came up with a better idea of having to put that in the home bleaker, six feet apart, pace facing the field. We'll put the stage on the track. This will allow each kid to cross the stage in front of their classmates. It's going to be more of a informal ceremony, more of a celebration than a ceremony. We got Duser Smith's coming. He's going to announce the kid's name as they cross the stage and we're going to make it fun. We're going to allow them to use their nicknames. Right now, we're trying to get verification from the alien elf. They may be coming to provide hot dogs and hamburgers for everybody. We're going to invite the kids to bring their yearbook so they can sign their yearbooks while we're there. We have a surprise for them and I'm going to send an email out hopefully tomorrow finalizing everything for them. But we had this school musical, School of Rock. We're uniting the band from School of Rock. They're going to play live for the kids while they're there. So it'll be more of a fun celebration for the kids. If by any chance they loosen their restrictions, then we can invite parents. We'd love to be able to do that. Right now, we can't, but we're hoping that maybe by July 2nd, we're able to.
Thank you, Mr. Keeler.
Are they going to be recording now?
We're going to do it at 6 o'clock, yes.
And hit a head nod, but I'm pretty sure.
Hold on, he said something.
The only thing makes me nervous.
I don't want to discount, Ken did put a comment. Oh, I was serious. So thank you, Ken. I appreciate that if that was meant for me. Want to make sure that, you know, of course, you know, there's some cookies here. Maybe we'll drop them off to your house on the way home. All right, so moving up. Yes, he says. They're not the they're not the raspberry filled one, though, but Maggie makes a mean mint one. All right, so items removed from the consent agenda. Do we have anything? No. All right, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, capital A. Oh, my God, this is the smallest consent agenda ever to capital F. Matt and Jonah, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carried. Old business. So we have policy discussions, A for the admission of non resident students.
I do have information on that in front of me if you wanted any of the details behind that.
So we had because of Jarvis closing.
So last year, we basically made our policy read that we weren't going to accept any out of district students because we were converging into three schools and we didn't want there to potentially be an influx of students that we couldn't handle. My recommendation is to still remain at that policy because with our cuts and not knowing what our class sizes are going to be once kids pick classes, especially in the high school. I don't feel it's appropriate at this time to potentially deal with an influx in class sizes either when we're going to already have some situations where classes are going to be bigger.
I wanted to add to that. My thought too was because of COVID, we.
I mean, yeah, certainly.
Might not be the time to reopen.
Students, the the better. But just for your information, we currently have 29 out of district students that are are kind of grandfathered in, as well as 16 of those 29 are teachers' children that are here. So we do have that and I do approve that. And then we also have 45 students that go out to other schools with the majority of them being at Frankfurt. 22 of those 45 are at Frankfurt. And then we have others peppered around Little Falls, O D Y, Poland and Richfield and Dallasville. At any moment, if any of them came back or if any of the other schools, if any of the other schools said that they weren't accepting out of district.
You muted again?
Yeah. I wasn't muted, there we go.
Kyle's messing with you.
There you go, there you go. I'm still muted. Now it just went off. So anytime those students could come back, I mean, it's 45, they're they're peppered also through different grade levels. I have that in front of me where I have two first graders, two third graders, two fourth grader, five fifth graders, three sixth graders. So going down the line, those 45 are peppered equally across K through our first grade through 12. But overall, I think we should still stay with the policy of where we're at. That would be my recommendation. If I had to guess, and Marshall, you might be able to help me, less than than I would say eight to 10.
Written. Always get the phone calls. Do you guys have it up in campus somewhere? Some districts don't, do you? We refer them to the website and the conference, but we have to send some written ones that come in.
Yeah, I'm going, let's say it doesn't maybe. And ultimately, I'd love to have them here. I mean, I don't want to close our doors on anybody, but due to the circumstances, it's unique.
So what what would we need to do then? You'd have to revise it or is it just?
Right now, it's.
Line that says June 30th. Yeah.
To go to amend the existing policy 7002 to extend the year to or the date, however long you want to extend it. You could put it until further notice.
I would recommend until further notice. I mean, amend it and extend it.
We do that now or do I have to move it down to?
It's such a board if the entire board is willing to vote out until I use it and that shows the feeling is important.
Yeah, so thoughts, Matt?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so then.
Extend it. To leave it closed until further notice or to leave it closed and put it end date? You write school year by school year or?
Until further notice. So then we need to, can I do that now? So we need a motion to amend policy 7002 to remove the expiration date? The end date to until further notice. All in favor? Opposed? All right, so then we have approval of policy revisions, first reading. We have quite a slew of them. Dealing with basically student privacy protection, FERPA, education records. So does anyone have any thoughts, concerns, discussion? This is the first reading.
Kelly, so these are required, are these obtained us from the policy service? Are they required policies? It's something that we've looked into.
Right.
There was no changes with any. What they submitted to us, once they had revisions and or tweaks to it, they wouldn't submit them back to us. You you should have gotten the copies that showed all the markup on it in your packet. They were in there.
I don't think it showed any markers. I don't think it showed any markers.
Let me get that.
I didn't see.
Yeah, no, typically that's what they are for.
Yeah, no, typically that's what they are for. One, some of the markup would have been required copies that they just sent us, such as is required. You have a reason. No, like one of them has a form that replaces two forms.
Yeah, I was just going to say a lot of them are just the.
Like 75004 replaces current 75004 and 75005. And 75005 is then deleted.
There's, I'm not seeing any markups on the ones I have either. They're required.
So do we want to make a motion or you want to do a second reading? So we need, then I'll need a motion to approve the policy revisions.
See, you're.
You bet, Michael. Exactly what you said. That's why I said what I said earlier.
Waving the second reading.
So we need a motion to waive the second reading and approve the policy revision.
As submitted.
As submitted.
As submitted.
Jane?
Second.
Jonah?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carried. All right, so new business, acceptance of the annual budget Board of Election vote results for on June 9th, 2020. That Matt first? Any discussion?
I wanted to clarify that should read and will read in a minute, June 16th with the deadline.
Oh. Any other discussion? Congratulations to Travis and John Voucher. All right, all in favor? Opposed? Staying? Motion carried. C, approval of arrangement of services, CSC CPSC 504 Accommodation Plan meetings. Need a motion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carried. C, approval of personnel appointments. We have tenure appointments. Courtney Allen, Dawn Cooley, Alina Horner, Michelle Hula, and Mandy Knowles. We do them all at once, right? And then instructional appointments, Allison Eisenhut and Kelly Wong.
Kelly, can I just ask for the record because the tenure recommendations in the minutes will list out each certification area and probationary appointments for the instructional positions are two different lengths. Could we take those three separate votes, please?
Yep. Everybody get that?
Yep.
So then we need tenure appointments. For A, tenure appointments, need a motion?
Motion. Second. Are we doing anything there?
If we can come back, we, we probably should. I mean, we normally would do that tonight and, but I think that's a good point. We could certainly try to if, you know, at our meeting in September, I guess, to, or maybe even in August, I'm not sure. But yeah, we can invite the families in and do it more formally for them at that point.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carried. B, instructional appointments, three-year probationary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carried. C, instructional appointments.
Okay.
Did he?
I was asleep.
That was 700, correct?
Yes. Matt, don't be fresh.
I was asleep.
Don't be fresh. We don't have time for freshness.
Just thinking of getting another coffee.
All right, instructional appointment, four-year probationary.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carried. Congratulations to all of our tenure teachers, teacher assistants, school counselors, and our new special education teachers.
Yes.
For the fall. D, approval of non-union salary adjustments for the 2020-2021 school year. Need a motion?
I'll make it. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carried. Approval of non-union personnel agreements effective July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. Need a motion? That was all three. We're going to go with Jane and then Maggie. That's for you being fresh. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carried. F, approval of, approval to dispose of surplus votes for Jarvis inventory loss. Need a motion?
I'll make it.
Second.
Yes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carried. Please note that your next Board of Education meeting without me is July 1st, 2020. I need a motion to adjourn. Adjourn, adjourn. I got Jason.
I agree.
Jonah. All in favor?
Did Jason join?
I wasn't like Jason. Yeah, there was Jason.
I'll go.
Kyle muted me. Because he really muted me and I was sorry.
Are we?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What is this?
So you should see it anymore discussion and you didn't say it. So I was.